Okay, it's Monday, March 6th, and we will call this city council meeting to order. We'd like to welcome everyone to the council meeting tonight. If everyone would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Deb.
Brad, Rodney.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Jody.
Here.
Harley.
Here.
Would entertain a motion to approve today's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Across the mayor's desk, I'd like to thank our videographer, Montgomery Halsenrood, for helping us tonight. And we certainly want to congratulate the Bishop Garrygan girls basketball team on their second championship. And well, I think we'll have more about that in a couple of weeks at our next council meeting. But in the meantime, in the meanwhile, I'll go to the high school boys' basketball team. They're starting their first game tomorrow at 2:00 o'clock down at State. So we certainly wish them well. So does the council have anything they would like to share? Okay, hearing none, an update from the city administrator.
All right, I have a number of different items to share with you this evening. One of them was just a matter that came up today, was Overmeyer Drive, just east of the Aquatic Center there. We had a storm intake that was on our list to have some repair work done here this spring with the soft ground that we had. There is a major wash out there, so we called in emergency repair for that today. So that section of the street was closed down for part of today and will be closed down for at least part of tomorrow, just to get the emergency repair in place. And then we'll get the final construction of the storm intake repairs here this spring. So that's just something, the sidewalk and, like I said, road on Overmeyer Drive there just by the Aquatic Center has been shut down while those improvements are made. A few different items are out for bid right now. So we've issued a notice to bidders for the Finn Drive and Wooster Street reconstruction projects. The bid opening and due date on those is 11:00 a.m. on March 14th. And then we're on track to hold the public hearing and award the construction contract at the March 20th city council meeting. This last week, the notice to bidders for the Central Park Improvement Project was issued. The bid due date and opening on that project is Thursday, March 23rd at 11:00 a.m. And then on Monday, April 3rd, at that council meeting, we'll have the public hearing and anticipate awarding the construction contract. And then the notice to bidders for removal of ash trees as part of the city's Emerald Ash Bore Mitigation Plan, that's been issued and those, that bid opening due date is 9:00 a.m. on Thursday, March 16th here at City Hall, and anticipate awarding a contract for that at the March 20th meeting. We've also recently posted some summer jobs that are available, so in the Public Works Department, hiring multiple seasonal positions within streets, and cemetery, and parks, as well as wastewater. For parks and recreation, hiring seasonal parks maintenance staff, umpires, as well as lifeguards, concessions, and other pool staff. And then, as well as, we are going to have the summary communications interned to help with Joanne's position on some of the writing, photography, collecting kind of our digital resources, so she can focus on some of the higher level initiatives of that position. So those are some seasonal jobs that we are currently advertising for, and you can find those on the city website under "How Do I?" And then you just go to apply for job openings, either that or the seasonal staff positions. So with those items, I'd like to call up our police chief, Beau Miller, to make a few introductions of some recently new patrol officers.
Yeah, thank you guys very much for having us here. Just a kind of quick update on us. We are officially full staff, which is great. And we still have one out right now on an injury. We're hoping within the next couple of weeks we'll have him back. But I'm just going to introduce them, and I'm going to let them come up, and I'd like to have them just give you guys a little overview of who they are. And then we've got to let them go because Nick's got a big dodgeball night tonight, and he's recruiting law enforcement to come in. All I said is I can't get hurt. So first up, we have Drew Strong, and then next, after that, we'll come talking, is Jared Littlejohn. All right, now let you guys just talk.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Drew Strong, been in law enforcement for three and a half years. Family and I moved up to the Central Iowa area, move closer to family, look forward to working for the city of Algonah. Any questions?
Welcome.
Hey, everybody. My name is Jared Littlejohn. I'm originally from Fair and Iowa, lived there my whole life. Graduated from there, high school in 2016, went to law enforcement, played baseball instead of criminal justice. Graduated from there in 2021, I believe. Can't really remember, but I graduated. Got hired on in Belmont, 2022, actually 2021, and I came here not too long ago, so. Any questions for me?
Thanks, guys.
That's thank you.
Thank you.
Just a reminder, the legislative forum is at the library on March 18th at 10:00. The three legislators that will be there is Senator Rowley, Representative Wills, and Representative Stone will all be there. And they are willing to stay after the public portion of the legislative forum to talk to elected officials and appointed officials about what's going on at the State House with local option sales tax and property tax reform and such. So I hope you all can attend because I think it's a very important meeting. Thanks.
Good, thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number seven, this is a citizen's opportunity to address the council with any item that's not on the agenda. Anyone like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move then to number eight, the consent agenda, and that includes approving the minutes from our February 20th work session, regular council meeting, and the special session that we had on the February 20th. The consent agenda also includes the bills that are to be paid this cycle, approve a Class C liquor license for wine and spirit shop, approve a Class C liquor license for Peps, approve a Class C liquor license for Emeralds, approve a Class C alcohol license for the Cassuth County Speedway and Cassuth County Fair, approve a Class C liquor license for Akron Stop, and approve Jacob's administrator's report.
Move to the first.
We have a motion from Harley, second from Jody. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Move to new business agenda, item number nine, this is the first reading of an ordinance regarding parking violations fees.
Yes, as you recall, at the last work session, we had discussed this amendment as far as this kind of our periodical review of different code sections. It was discovered that our current fee for a parking violation citation is $3. Well, we want to be reasonable with those fees. We think $3 is a little low. So we developed this ordinance amendment which would increase the citation fee for our parking violation to $25.
I think it's something that's probably a long time coming. $3 is kind of ridiculous, you know, not going to bother anybody, so I would move to approve $25.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Harley.
We're going to wait.
We need to wave for the ordinance. You need to wave the reading.
Move to wave the first reading.
There we go. Thank you, Rodney.
Yep, I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to wave the first reading. Is there any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
And move to approve the first reading.
We have a motion and a second to approve the first reading. Any discussion? Roll call, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number 10, this is a resolution approving the Emerald Ash Bore Response Plan.
So we've discussed it a few different council work sessions over the last several months, but this is a plan developed in response to Emerald Ash Bore being found in rural Cassuth County just south of Algonah here this last summer. It's within 15 miles of Algonah, so it's considered within the zone of that. Even though we haven't technically found it in Algonah, we are assuming that it is here. So this plan walks through kind of the procedures and programs and process for mitigation of our ash trees. Unfortunately, we have about more than 800 ash trees on public property within the city, and it's about 23% of our total public tree stock. So in the plan, we address different areas of in the right-of-way, parks, cemeteries, airport, other city grounds. As part of the program, or excuse me, as part of the response plan, we do include establishment of a program to partnership with abutting property owners for treatment of trees within the right-of-way. So this would be something that the, and we'll actually be rolling out, you know, the application and kind of program operational materials. But this would be a program that the abutting property owner would apply for if the city deemed that this was a tree that was in good shape and was a legitimate, a viable candidate for treatment. It would be a cost share program of up to $150 per treatment, per tree, or up to, not to exceed one-half of the costs of that trunk injection of the insecticide for Emerald Ash Bore. So if there are folks that have some ash trees that are in good shape and they're right-of-way in front of their property that they like to see maintained, this program would be a way to help kind of ease that impact of the tree removals we're going to have to have. The reason majority of the plan talks about removing trees and then if we can replanting is once a tree is infected with the ash bore, it's just a matter of time before it dies. It usually takes place within one to two years. And at that point, ash trees become very brittle and pose a public hazard if they were to fall on property or a vehicle or pedestrian. One thing that, just a little bit different from the plan that we had shared at the last work session, is we did include maps showing the parks and the cemeteries of where the ash trees are, especially in Blackford Park and Veterans Park. Unfortunately, we have quite a number of ash trees, so that's just something that just will, as time goes by, we'll have a document that kind of tracks our progress, but just establishing a baseline of where we're at on our inventory of those areas. And then talks about our plan for reforestation, following our current ordinance on replanting, our current AMU city planting program, as well as the injection or treatment program set forth under this plan, and then as well as disposal of trees, and then the budget and timeline moving forward. This will likely be an effort that we'll be dealing with for the next decade plus. How much we allocate in a given year, how many trees we treat or remove will really just depend on how fast it spreads. Every year, we'll be reevaluating the condition of our trees and prioritizing that list. The goal is to make sure that we stay ahead before those trees become hazardous, or if they do become hazardous, that they're on that list to be taken down that current year or as soon as they can. So that's kind of a high-level overview of the plan, as well as some of the attachments of resources on symptoms and things like that. So happy to answer any questions that may be out there.
So are we going to actively try and promote tree-for-tree replacement as they come down? Or, I guess in the parking, I'm curious, are we going to, because the sewer lines run there, are we going to try to avoid those and move the trees then? What's the plan for replacement?
In the right-of-way, it will really depend on what's in there for the underground utilities in the surrounding area. Our current tree ordinance, let me just pull it up here, does have limitations on where you can plant in the right-of-way, not within five feet of the curb or sidewalk, not within 10 feet of any underground utilities. So if trees are removed and we think they could go back in there, that's something we're going to look at in terms of like an intentional mailer or contacting that property owner specifically. But generally, chances are more than likely that the tree would not be able to go back in the right-of-way based on all the underground utilities there.
There are some areas of town that do not have infrastructure in the right-of-way. We approved, what, probably five or six tree permits last year to put them in the right-of-way?
Our parks that have, I mean Emerald, I mean ash trees that are still in good shape, are we going to actively start treating those? I mean, if we know they're in good shape, I mean, are we going to try to actively start and be proactive and try to keep those in our parks?
The one in the Central Park that's going to remain after the redevelopment project this summer, plans for that one to be treated. Down at Vets, we don't plan to treat any of those just because of the issues of trees growing down there to begin with. Blackford Park as well, just because there's so many. But some of that will kind of depend on where we come in for what, you know, costs are. Once we kind of do this first initial round of bidding, we kind of get an idea on what we can get for scale, because some of those, you know, are going to be trees that we're going to need to hopefully have in place for the next several years as we finally get to them. And it, yeah, might make sense to be treating those in the interim.
I would think it'd be nice, like Blackford where there's so many trees, so many ash trees there, either treat a few to keep some canopy there, or, and/or plant some new ones in some open spaces immediately, so it gets some new growth coming.
On page 13, we have a couple of different schedules there. Do we have to decide on one of those?
No, those are just some different scenarios of, you know, how funding might, you know, work over time. Like I said, you know, it might be eight years, 10 years, 15 years, it'll kind of just depend on the spread. If all of a sudden, you know, we're having, you know, very rapid, you know, infection and we've got to, you know, increase this, so, you know, any trees that are infected, you know, we don't want those standing around for a long time. You know, it might have to be shortened. And so this just kind of, you know, lays out the different scenario. But it will, you know, depend on council every year, having an annual allocation that we think, you know, based on how many trees on the, again, kind of the condition review that need to take down. So hopefully, it's somewhat predictable, but it's going to be one of those things we're going to have to reevaluate every year.
As part of the bucket every year, then?
Yeah. So in the current FY '23 budget, when we did our first amendment, we added $25,000 in there for Emerald Ash Bore mitigation. And then in the current working draft of the 2024 budget, we do have $75,000 in there for both of those coming out of local option sales tax.
Make a motion then to approve the resolution approving Emerald Ash Bore Response Plan. Second.
A motion from Rodney, second from Don. Any other discussion? Roll call, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 11 involves an appointment to the Cassuth County EMS Advisory Council.
As part of the countywide essential service EMS vote that passed here this last November, an EMS advisory council for the county is required to exist underneath Iowa code to supervise and assess and make recommendations of the countywide essential service. The county has prepared bylaws for that commission, which have been approved by the board supervisors. Membership of that includes a representative from the board supervisors, a representative from the county hospital, three at-large positions, and then a representative from the South Hub as well as the North Hub, the South Hub being Algonah, with the intent being that the hubs that the current service that would exist would turn over to the county, that this is the way for those jurisdictions to still have input on overseeing the service. Just kind of based on where we're at with the hybrid system we've had in place now for nearly three years, and with the transition, and I talked with the mayor and Phil Albers on this, my recommendation would be to appoint myself as city administrator to the advisory board for the time being. After we get through the first full year of implementation, I've done that initial assessment, you know, at that time, I think it would be good if we want to reevaluate and see if, you know, it makes more sense for it to, you know, to reassign that to an appointed official, but kind of just given the transition and the complexities of, you know, now that we have under the current system as we transition. When we did develop these bylaws, that was something that we discussed and is allowed, that doesn't have to be an elected official from either the North or South Hub. So, you know, just kind of give them around and transition. That would be my recommendation, at least for this next, you know, probably through the end of calendar year 2024.
And this is a council that you've been on already getting it started, and...
Correct, yeah. So before we went to the ballot, we had to have a version of this council, which I was on that, and at that time, just because of the nature of the beast, I was appointed as a non-voting member. So continue to serve on that, just switching now to a voting role.
And as for our conversation earlier, I do see a section four where it says seven members there, so.
Okay.
Is there a motion then to appoint Jacob to this advisory council?
Well, I think it makes sense. Jacob's been involved a lot, you know, before, and going forward, it'll be a good transition once this gets implemented. So I make a motion to appoint Jacob to the EMS advisory council.
Second.
We have a motion from Jody, second from Harley. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. And that'll be a good appointment, good motion to go forward with you on there. So move to agenda item number 12, which is discussion of the public records policy.
As we were putting together the agenda, we realized we only had a couple of action items, so rather than a work session, we thought we'd just put these at the end of the meeting, so we'll just hover however long we wish to speak on them, or brief we can. The public records policy, which was shared, is a draft policy, just basically to formalize our process and procedures under Iowa code, chapter 22, which is the public records or open records law. Basically, is anything that is, that, you know, there's some exceptions with investigative reports, personnel information, confidential information, security exemptions, but generally, most documents of the city are considered a public record. So this just sets forth the process that if anyone wants to view or get copies of those records, how we implement the requirements under Iowa code, chapter 22, to do that. It establishes the custodians of records, which would be the fire chief, police chief, library director, public works director, and city clerk. Goes through the response time, where we try to respond within 20 days, 20 calendar days, but depending on the nature of the request, if it has to be reviewed for possible redactions, whether it's a digital form or not, you know, kind of the considerations for the timeline that might take. The Iowa code 22 also allows cities to charge the costs of providing records requests that can be directly attributed to that request. So this kind of sets forth our process for determining those. We would have two types of fees, one a labor service fee, so code requires that the first 30 minutes that takes to do a search is at no charge, but after that, you know, whether that's preparing copies or, you know, searching, finding, preparing records, they'd be charged for the actual hourly rate of the person doing that work, and then fees for providing copies, either photocopies or electronically, that we would collect, you know, those, again, directly attributable, attributed expenses to provide those records. And then it would be, those fees would just, would be set by a separate resolution. And then from time to time, you know, reviewed and updated as necessary. So what we have, you know, tonight is just a draft policy. These were what we have for our draft fees in there, but, you know, really, it's, a lot of it's the, how we navigate the requirements set forth in chapter 22, so a lot of it isn't really up for our local, you know, changing or how we want to do it, but, you know...
Oh, is that a code?
Yeah, just establishing that, you know, we can and how we will calculate fees and the timeline, and who to contact, and is the person, you know, officially in charge of those records and things of that matter. So happy to answer any questions or receive any comments.
Does that occur to ask, how many of these kind of requests do we get a week or a year?
So in the, in the policy, it makes reference to like routine requests, which, you know, would be copies of meeting minutes or a resolution or an ordinance. Those we might get a couple a month and, you know, are usually, I mean, take 10 minutes to provide. But this is kind of geared towards those larger, you know, public records requests that, you know, might take some actual searching or, you know, compiling of several records. It's maybe one a year, so it's, usually, they're pretty quick and it's right there. But if we were to kind of have to get into the weeds, it, you know, provides the process for handling that.
More and more of our records are now electronic, so forced to have to go back to actually look through the fiscal book would take a whole lot more time to access a record, so.
Yep.
So with these being electronic, I mean, are they online? They can also look them up or not?
So with Laserfish, which I think we, about a year and a half ago now, we've been using that vendor for digitizing our records. There is an option on that that we do plan in the future at some point to turn on, which allows like public access to certain records. At this point, since we're still building the library, we haven't turned that on yet, so, you know, but like right now on our website, I think we've got like all the council agendas and minutes archived back to 2015. So the goal would be with Laserfish to have something similar for resolutions, ordinances, policies, that if someone wants to find something, they can, you know, have a means to just go find it themselves. We've got probably the majority of ordinances, resolutions, and minutes from pretty much all of this, you know, 21st century, most of the 20th at this point. So Nancy's been making really good progress on that. So, yeah, it might just be in the future, refer to that, or right now, it's still handy because we can just do a keyword search and download it and send it to them as opposed to having to go through and look through the actual books.
Logical, we can do that.
Any other discussion about that? Have anything else, Jacob, for that?
I just note it does not apply to Algonah Municipal Utilities. They have their own policy, and then there are certain investigative reports when it comes to police and fire that are exempt from public records, so that it wouldn't apply to those.
Okay. Okay. Okay, we'll move to agenda item number 13, then. This is discussion also concerning the retail revolving loan fund program.
This was something that the staff's been working with the Retail RLF Committee on, doing some updates to our current program, the Retail Revolving Loan Fund or RLF. So the, what was uploaded that was handed out, basically everything in yellow is a change worth of note. I had a few different ways of tracking that, and so I didn't get all of it highlighted, but those items in green are also new items. A lot of them is just kind of reformatting, or just, you know, taking things out of a giant paragraph and just kind of bullet pointing it out. But a few changes that this was based on the, what we have from the RLF Committee is changing the name of the program from the Retail RLF just to the Small Business RLF. Like I said, we added information on the history and formatting. On page three, further defining the role of and the membership of the RLF Review Committee, increasing the maximum loan amount from the 15,000 to 20,000, as well as establishing a minimum loan amount of 5,000. And then we also, previously had language in there about being able to use this as a grant, a second RLF, RLF funds if the city were to establish a grant program. So in the goals and eligible activities, we did add a goal to encourage and help facilitate building facade improvements, which support restoration, maintenance, architectural integrity, and related items. As we discussed before, it's coming up with some sort of downtown design guidelines, recommendations, best practices, or a program. So that would be set up separately, but we do just make reference that if and when we go that route, this would be a program, this fund would be eligible for that, and then if they are using the funds for exterior building improvements, that they provide drawings or plans of the proposed building changes. A couple of items that were, I guess, outstanding, and just want to point out to council as we kind of finalize how we put this together. On some of the eligible expenses, we had some discussion on, you know, business startup costs or operating capital. You know, we've, historically, has always been tied to, you actually have to be, you know, doing an improvement, buying an asset, you know, that can be equipment, it can be a building, it can be, you know, tools or software licenses. We haven't done working capital. So I think we'd, you know, we do require that all the loans are secured with, you know, at least at a minimum of the value of the loan. So if, you know, it was secured or something else, technically, we could provide working capital, but I just think that's kind of a different type of item, and there's plenty of other types of expenses that you can incur, you know, that this program's eligible, like, say, either building, purchase, improvements, any of that, you know, equipment, furniture, fixtures are eligible. So I think there's enough flexibility there, so I wouldn't want to go down that route. And then the other item would be on setting a loan interest rate. The current guidelines simply just state that the loan will be somewhere between 0 and 5%, and then talks about, you know, kind of the different considerations with the RLF Committee had recommended, so that's why I include in there at the bottom of page three was, an interest rate on the loan shall be half of prime, not to exceed 2.5%. I think right now primes between 7.5% and 8%, somewhere in there. You know, I think, you know, depending on what rates are, if we'd want to, you know, that 2.5%, I think seems a little low. Another option that we could look at, you know, that we just kicked around internally is, you know, we could do, the default is, you know, half a prime plus one, and then these would be, you know, considerations that might reduce that interest rate. So it could be, you know, how important is the project financing, you know, towards completing the project, or, you know, how tight is their pro forma? Is it a new business? Is it filling a market gap that, you know, we currently don't have? So there would be, you know, some discretion in terms of being able to be aggressive with, you know, if this is, you know, really something that we need, you know, we really want to, you know, the numbers are tight, we want to set that lower as opposed to not being. One thing we want to avoid, which has just kind of become more of a concern in the last, you know, probably year or so with interest rates going up, is we don't want to just, you know, people applying for this program because they're shopping for rates. If they can finance it privately, you know, that, that's how we prefer that they do it, as opposed like, well, I can get a, you know, some cheaper money from the city, but, you know, is it really needed towards the project? So I think, you know, that's kind of one of the other considerations of it is, I think it's worth keeping a low interest rate, you know, that's, it's only so much money, and that's one way we can help. But I think finding that balance for the discretion, but also not just people coming to us because they want a lower rate, not because they need to, because, you know, otherwise let the private sector handle that.
The committee met, Jacob wasn't able to attend, I wish Brad was here because he's in the committee, they were very adamant that they did not want the interest rate above 2.5% because this is made to help small business open their business. And no, we don't want to replace the bank, but we're usually small potatoes in what it costs to open that business. There is place on the application, you have to show your other financing, so if we are the only, only loan in the game, they can deny that. You know, they have to have either bank financing or cash on their own to open it, and we're the small guy in helping them open it, and they were all very adamant of keeping that interest rate very low.
And we've never, I mean, have we ever gotten not paid back in?
Yeah.
I think we've had two, we've got one, I know, that we wrote off, and one we're currently going after yet.
Okay.
But, I mean, that's out of
How many?
Several dozens of these loans. I mean, the default rate is, I mean, tiny, tiny.
Well, one thing that has helped, in the old rules, you made your payments quarterly. In the new rules, you make monthly payments, and it's done by ACH. Because when it was quarterly, the people who were always behind you are like, oh, wow, I forgot about paying that. I'll be, you know, I'll be in this week and get it paid. So now doing it ACH and monthly, they don't have to worry about it.
I mean, I'm thinking that's low as possible, which would be good, too. I think we want to encourage that, you know, especially if the committee believes in that, so.
Yeah, I don't think we have that money, you know, that they're coming to us too often, that we're like, or we're too low, like, they're coming to us because we're like totally the least expensive option, or probably just that one option that they see, like, okay, this is something I can, you know, hopefully fill in a little gap with starting my business, but.
Well, and even when we were at 0% interest, when interest rates were fairly low, we didn't have anybody, since I took over, trying to skirt the bank and go directly just with the city. I, most of them understand that you have to have your bank financing or cash upfront, and we're the second position on that.
And that's all review about the RLF Committee then?
It goes to RLF Committee, and then I get all the documents ready, and you guys have to approve it before it's finalized.
So unlike the Housing Commission, which that is, you know, does any authority to make funding decisions on its own, those housing loans don't have to come before council. The Retail RLF Committee is just an advisory committee, so, you know, they vet the project and then make a recommendation, and the ultimate decision is up to council.
How many of those are out there right now, then? Ball mark at least?
Probably like 30-ish.
30.
In the year since I've taken this over, I think I've done four loans. So, I mean, we don't get a lot every year, but it's a good thing to have.
We had kind of seen it tapered down in the, you know, probably 2015 after, you know, the, and so when we kind of amended the rules in 2019 and relaunched the program to kind of just get it out there more, make it a little more streamlined, and increase the amount from that time, from 10,000 to 15,000. I think we maybe did the non-COVID, you know, emergency loans, you know, probably four to six, but I think that was probably a little higher on average in a given year, just because we were kind of, again, putting the program back out there to get in the, you know, the public's eye. So I think those first couple years were maybe, you know, higher than what we would be typically.
Yeah, and in that 30 loans that are out there, all, some of those were the emergency COVID loans that were also, so they're not all startup business or remodel the business type things, they're emergency COVID loans also.
Any other discussion about the RLF?
So we won't plan to have anything, you know, to use towards like operating capital, but when it comes to the, you know, interest rate, do you like what's in there? Are there some other things you'd like us to, you know, look at and present as options or, you know?
I kind of like what's in there. I think we want to encourage the use of it. It's just part of their whole financing package to put a business together, and I think it's a small amount, no matter what, and it's just, it helps them buy that one piece of equipment, put that sign on their building, you know, table or whatever, that's great. That's what we want to be able to do.
Yeah, I think it's good. I like it the way it is now.
Okay.
Very good, too.
Well, we will finalize this and then plan to have it on the March 20th council agenda for approval.
Okay. Thank you for your work on that. That can be, that rate can be revisited if we, if we're able to.
Yeah, I mean, if we put, you know, no more than 2.5%, I mean, that is going to be a hard cap on it. Hopefully, we don't see rates, you know, go up much more, but, you know, it's, there's a good chance for that. You know, before this last year, when we were sitting at, you know, 3% or 4% prime, you know, us being at, you know, 0% to 1% to 2% on a loan, it kind of made sense, I would just, the gap between what a bank can provide and what we can provide, again, is kind of back with that partnership with them. We don't want, you know, if they can bank finance, that's where we wanted to see it done, as opposed to us becoming a bank for them. So, but, yeah, any of these rules, there's, I think the last page lays out the amendments, so kind of minor operational administrative tweaks, though, can just be done with approval of the Retail RLF Committee, but any major changes like interest rates, or the dollar amount, or program criteria, that would come back before council for approval by resolution.
Jake, while we're talking about this, a close program is that second story program. Is that one that's, is that just available certain times a year, or that's a state program, isn't it?
Yeah, the, so the Iowa Economic Development Authority has the Community Development Block Grant Upper Story Housing, so that would be separate from this, that's a state grant, but this could, you know, as we kind of go into housing on our next item, you know, either from the housing loan or this program, you know, potentially, yeah, we could, you know, this might be a funding source to incentivize upper story housing, either, you know, as a loan, it could be used.
Okay. I had a question about that earlier in the day, and I didn't remember exactly how that program went, but I thought it was just certain periods during the year you could apply it for.
Yeah, the IDA program, they've got, I don't know if that one's quarterly, or that one might just still be annually that you can apply.
I think that one's a yearly.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Okay, we'll move to agenda item number 14, and this is discussion to review the status of the Urban Revitalization Plan.
Let me finish my notes, sorry. So in our last council meeting, we had, you know, an agenda on there with Allers and Cooney to help with our urban, services with our urban revitalization plan or tax abatement. So we're currently, we have four areas, each one has been amended several times from the original plans in the 1980s. So however we go with the urban revitalization route, we want to just, let's get a new plan and not doing amendments to amendments to amendments, but, you know, just for kind of simplicity's sake, you know, reestablish a new plan. So Iowa Code, Chapter 404, you know, outlines what cities can give for tax exemption. So what we'd be looking at is, right now, we have citywide commercial and residential. Commercial, it's three years, 100% or a sliding 10-year scale that goes 80, 70, 60, and down. And then the residential is five years, 100%, no cap for residential improvement citywide. Simmering Quarry, the playing firm we've been working with, has prepared a blight assessment for the city, and their third-party assessment, if we wanted to go in this route, they believe the finding justifying that would be considered citywide blight. We'd be, you know, eligible to declare that, you know, legitimately, and continue the current abatement schedule that we have. So on the commercial side of things, we anticipate basically staying as we are with either three years, 100%, that's the max, or that sliding scale. On the residential, without that considered within a blighted area, the, so on point three there, the standard, if it's not a blighted area, the most you can exempt as a city is 100% on the first $75,000. I don't know when the last time that $75,000 amount was updated in the code, but obviously it's been a long time. So under, to continue our current, which we found with the blighting assessment, we could continue as is, or go up as far as, you know, 100% up to 10 years. I, you know, don't like the idea of going anywhere close to that long, especially on residential, just because with the rollbacks and, I mean, those subdivisions, taxes usually don't pay for themselves to begin with. But, you know, we have the tools, or we have the ability to go up to those, so we could set a different percentage, or a different, you know, number of years, or put, or set a cap on that, just knowing that we could go beyond the only the first 75. So our current ordinance and plan only identifies commercial and residential. Another option that we could put in there would be a multifamily or multi-residential plan, and on that, regardless of the blight assessment, we can go up to 10 years at 100%. So I think that would be one, a classification worth looking at, just because we have, other than Obi Lang, which we had an urban renewal TIF rebate agreement on, we haven't seen, you know, construction of, you know, apartment buildings, you know, here in recent years, and just with density and need for housing, I think it might make sense to add that to, you know, if that will encourage development of multifamily housing. So those are kind of the, you know, the three different options on the urban revitalization, tax abatement. Any kind of initial questions on those three categories? So one thing that we've been batting around, and I've talked with the attorneys at Allers and some other communities on, if there's some other options than tax abatement on the residential side. So, you know, what we sometimes see on that is the value of that abatement in terms of the homeowner in terms of the homeowner understanding that value, the bank understanding that value, getting them qualified. Okay, then after five years, that abatement's no longer there. Can you still afford the loan? You know, it's a significant amount of money that ultimately gets abated. And does it make sense, okay, rather than abating that over five years and not paying taxes, that we do some sort of incentive upfront, you know, that can go towards construction costs or down payment and then start paying taxes day one? And, you know, you're basically providing that money upfront upon an occupancy permit being issued as opposed to just not collecting that money over time. So I provide an example on the back of, you know, just a kind of scenario of a typical residential new build. You know, if it added value of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, making some assumptions on what the rollback rate is and what the city levy is. But over that five years at our current abatement schedule, that's about eleven thousand dollars in city taxes not being collected that otherwise would be. So one option would be to look at is, okay, that, what we would have otherwise abated, let's take that ten thousand dollars and provide it, you know, upfront in terms of a grant or a program. We're going to see more movement, you know, more housing based on that. You know, it's a little bit more of a unique program that in the last couple of years, you've seen more cities shifting towards, there's some, definitely some legalese maneuvering you have to do in setting it up that way in terms of it being ineligible use. But from talking with Ollers, I think we can get there. It just, you know, it's going to take some writing and, you know, some declaring these, you know, and putting a plan together. So the, you know, kind of given the fact that we, if we wanted to do like just a direct incentive option, you know, we want to consider that as opposed to the residential tax abatement. One or the other, have it being either or, you know, or just stick with the tax abatement as is. Stick with tax abatement as is, but put caps. You know, something that, whether through the abatement schedules or a direct incentive, you know, it makes sense for the older parts of town that are infill development, less desirable lots, you know, harder to build on, that we have a higher incentive for building new on those as opposed to, you know, greenfield development. At the same time, we need all housing, you know, units to increase. You know, so I, you know, we'll certainly have some more meetings on this and we can have, you know, some of the attorneys or planners join us at some of those future ones. But just kind of wanted to share the different options that are out there and get any input from council. There are some cities where I think Spencer and Carroll had one where it was just, if you build a new, you're out of housing unit, here's a check for ten thousand dollars. That's the oversimplified version of it. Those other cities, they'll waive building permit fees, they'll waive sewer taps, you know, to buy down costs. But, you know, what's most common is, you know, just tax abatement.
And there are others that are trying to do away with that tax abatement, change it, like you said.
Yeah, I think, you know, the kind of the one thing that's a little bit frustrating about the tax abatement, so when we updated our ordinance back in 2018, those homes that had, you know, were built then, they're still not on the tax rolls. You know, and so if it was, you know, only a three-year instead of a five-year or, you know, that was weighted kind of based on the challenges of the lot or if it was instead of a hundred percent, it's a declining scale. So there obviously are costs to maintain and provide services, but at the same time, it is in our interest to see new housing go up. So we don't want to, you know, just take away all incentives because the reason we adopted that aggressive schedule back in 2018 was because in 2017, we had zero new housing starts.
Well, actually, having the money upfront would simplify some things, even as far as the person wanting to build the home, that ten thousand would help him and the bank as far as, you know, some funds to get a loan with. Where in abatement, it's hard for banks to think about that as value.
I agree, yeah.
The city of Newton was one of the first cities to do this catch-up plan. And when they closed, the city wrote them a check for ten thousand dollars. And he was like, here you go, you can use it however you want, go on vacation, whatever. And I know they're a lot closer to Des Moines, but they started getting developers coming in to develop actual neighborhoods, not just individual houses being built. Because a developer would get the ten thousand dollars also as soon as that house was done and had an occupancy permit. So it incentivized developers to come in.
Well, I know our tax abatement five years ago, or it closed five years ago, was very aggressive. Obviously, it's done what we hoped to do to spur growth after we didn't have any. I don't think the ten thousand upfront stops any of those houses from being built. What, you know, we might want to incentivize the ten thousand upfront if it was in a blighted area or a condemned area, the people were taken down. And I mean, we can do it either way, but that ten thousand doesn't incentivize anybody that built where we're currently seeing growth built, you know. So the tax abatement's what did that. And, and so I agree, I think it might be out too far, and I think it might be too aggressive, and we need to really look at it. But I, the ten thousand to me seems to be something we need to specify areas. I don't know where it helps or really, sure, it helps somebody, but I don't think it incentivizes anybody from building. In, in a, in an area where houses are being built at two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand to five-hundred-thousand, you know, I don't know that ten thousand makes that big a difference.
Well, you know, it's something when to look at, you know, if we put a cap on how much value is added is, you know, when you look at, you know, I mean, to call it a different, you know, it's a public subsidy, you know, to build housing. And it's like, you know, there's, we need housing, we need, you know, ideally workforce affordable housing. It makes sense to incentivize that to some degree, but, you know, probably not the five-hundred-thousand-dollar, you know.
No, I agree, our tax abatement is probably very generous, and we need to continue to look. And I've said that, you know, we want us to look at that. And there's a time where maybe it's done what we've done, and we need to roll back a little bit so we start seeing some tax dollars and what we can get hurt with the rollbacks and stuff. But, I mean, if we're incentivizing somebody, ten thousand dollars, building a half-million-dollar house.
Yeah, but those houses, those owners would much rather take the ten thousand upfront than have a lower house payment over the next five years. They've got the ten thousand dollars in their hand to do what they want.
So not have ten thousand dollars a year in taxes? Were they going to save fifty thousand?
Well, it's not ten thousand a year.
Wow, but it's going to be five thousand on a five-hundred-thousand-dollar house or seven. So you're going to give them ten instead of thirty-five. I agree, we need to do something with that. But simple math in my head tells me, why wouldn't they take the tax abatement or why wouldn't they want that?
Because the abatement is, pretty much applies to, you know, the, all of the, you know, in the composite levy. Whereas, you know, so you're looking at, you know, a thirty-three per thousand as opposed to just the city levy, which is, you know, like sixteen, you know, per thousand.
You're looking at, I mean, he's mentioning new houses, but, you know, you're also talking improvements. So, you know, you abate that increase and.
And you've seen a few of those, yeah.
Yeah, and you'd want to probably look at minimum amounts there. So, you know, it's not so much depending on what the improvement is. Then another thing is the, I would expect the schools and the college would appreciate this because they have to wait for that abated money, too, where in this case, they wouldn't.
Something to keep looking at.
I guess I know I wasn't around on council back when we, when it was discussed, but how much of this coincides with how the market looks and what loan rates are and that kind of stuff? You know, was it immediately after taxes were abated that people started building? Or did that coincide with other market factors that were, that were making people build those houses? Were they going to build one way or the other in those locations out there? Or was it, you know, is there any data or any evidence that it actually is the tax abatement?
So I was not around when that was adopted, so this is all secondhand. But my understanding is that they had some developers or builders, you know, approached the city that, you know, they thought, you know, expanding, you know, or, you know, that the tax abatement would make it more attractive to build. I don't think there was, you know, that was back in 2018, so there wasn't like a big swing in interest rates or things like that. You know, I think the slash, just the slash of what we seem to do with interest rates, you know, that much more of a reason to actually, you know, take a look at things on, you know, how reality is. I don't know if Harley and Rodney, if you were around and found, if you recall off the top of your head.
They had like three years of hardly any, you know, building. Not just the one year, which was zero. We probably had one the year before, maybe two the year before, or whatever. And so there was a lot of, you know, and at that point, interest rates were good, but they didn't, I think after the tax abatement, they fell again. It came through really good. And it just happened to be a double win, a double win-win for people building, and we really saw a spurt of growth. And it created that housing that wasn't there either, like, you know, patio homes and that. For, what it also created was people to move out of maybe that hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house, build a house because they're able to now a little bit, then provide another starter home or a home for a young couple to be able to purchase. We just didn't have homes available. So by creating a tax abatement so people could build, we also created homes availability for people moving out of them and at a more affordable rate that people could maybe move into. And so it kind of worked. We were hoping it'd work that way, both, to create availability and to create new housing. And I think it did for a while. I think we're at a point where we need to talk about it because maybe it has been, it's pretty generous, and we need to look at it. I just wonder where we, that fine line is from where we're really giving the pie to not giving anything. I don't think there's a fine line defined in there, and that's where I hope we can. And to continue people to still look at that, there's still areas in this community, we still need housing. As you said, you know, whether it's multifamily or whether it's, you know, single family.
Another goal was to have people build in town instead of in the surrounding area, close to Algonah. Because people were, you know, you would give them incentive to build.
Yeah, because taxes were a little cheaper outside, you know, in those areas. And that, Paul, exactly right. Those three things were kind of all factors that we discussed when we made that decision. I don't think we expected as well as we, it was received even. I mean, it really created a boom for a while.
There's probably time to take a look at something different or upgrade it, update it.
Does the abatement, if someone sells their home and they have an abatement on it, does the abatement roll or transfer to a new owner?
Yeah, so basically, what happens is if you, you know, what gets abated on the property taxes, the, over at the county, the basically, the assessor takes that and puts that value in a file for five years. So it sticks with the property. And then after the, you know, number of years, if it's, you know, just the five years, a hundred percent after that, then the full value goes on the tax rolls. And, you know, because I've heard comments before about, you know, questions about, yeah, someone building a house and then, then moving and then moving and, you know, they've got all these tax breaks. Well, it sticks with the property and.
Yeah, eventually.
Yeah, it might seem odd, but ultimately, if it's leading to someone to, to build a house, you know, if they move someone else, you know, it, yeah, opens up that, that middle Rodney was talking about. So we'll continue, you know, working on the urban revive plan update with the commercial. You know, look at the residential multifamily and then dive into a little bit more detail on what we might do for a direct incentive program and/or residential urban revive. Okay.
Good research there. So agenda item number fifteen involved discussion with the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Yeah, and summary's six o'clock, so we'll keep this one brief. But in the administrator's report, on the last page there, there's an updated timeline. So that Senate File 181, which changed the residential rollback and moved the date of certified budgets due to April thirtieth, that was signed by the governor. So we'll plan to, at March twentieth, have a work section and kind of dive into the budget, start going over, kind of budget overall, property tax levy rates. And then look to, oh, sorry, I have a mistake on that. At the April third meeting, finalize those numbers, set the public hearing for April seventeenth. Then April seventeenth, hold the hearing and adopt the budget. With that residential rollback change, which took it down, I think about one-point-eight percent, that ended up decreasing our revenues by about fifty-three thousand, you know, in terms of, you know, fewer property tax dollars that we'll be collecting. So we'll have to, just starting to look at how, you know, that impacts what we had already planned on. But they're still looking at changes to senior citizen, you know, exemptions or military exemptions or, you know, potentially larger property tax, you know, reform in terms of caps, limiting growth, things like that. So I typically like to plan on having an extra meeting in there, but I want to shoot for the seventeenth to our last meeting of April to adopt the budget just because the more information we can have if additional legislation does pass or have a better sense on what might pass, just so we can have all that to consider before we adopt a budget and if we need to look at additional cuts or changes.
Okay, at six oh seven, and that comes to the end of our printed agenda. Entertained motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.